Okay, good morning, everyone. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Bowe.
Here.
Commissioner Curran.
Here.
Commissioner Freely.
Present.
Commissioner Harrison.
Here.
Commissioner Hinkleman.
Here.
Commissioner Majerik.
Here.
Commissioner Meek.
Here.
Commissioner Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Valra.
Present.
Commissioner Werfel.
Here.
Commissioner Yarborough. And Chair Elliott.
Here, thank you.
You have a form.
I'd say so. Minutes last week. Any problems with those or? It's so moved. Moved by Scott, supported by Meeks, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, minutes are approved. This is a good time for requisition review.
Perfect, yes, does anybody have any questions about the requisitions that I sent out? No, perfect, send that around, thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board. Today we have Kevin Stack. And this is going to seem familiar, especially for the admin committee members. Kevin is going to continue the discussion about Red Arrow Highway and the other proposed trail building projects. Our goal is, just speaking candidly, it's to beat this thing to death. I'm trying to pin down exactly what the board wants and what the board is unwilling, unable to accept. So at the last committee, the whole presentation where Kevin described this, he talked about the funding source being potentially the tap grants. We also had an extended conversation about local maintenance. In front of each of you is a copy of a couple of files. So Chickaming Township and New Buffalo Township has submitted resolutions acknowledging that they will maintain their sections of trail. Kevin's going to talk to you all about Lake Township. And my goal today is really to set some goalposts on what this board is looking for on future projects. So that we can then formalize the policy, get it run through admin and get it brought back to you all. And we believe this is something that we will get value out of. As we get out of Red Arrow Highway, we are going to be moving on to other projects. We know that through the Friends Group, that there are projects proposed for the north kind of the part, north or part of the county. The east part of the county and southwest, we know that these are coming. And if we can spend the next few minutes just trying to establish what you can accept and what you can't. That will help guide the conversations with some of these. These local leaders as well as the nonprofits on what future trail projects look like. So with that said, I'm going to ask Kevin to briefly walk you all through what is being planned. And then we'll pivot into a discussion about what the policy needs to look like. Kevin, you ready?
Yes, good morning. Like Brian said, it's going to be kind of a broken record here as far as discussion a little bit. Just a little bit more updates. Last time I was here, we were talking about obviously a path on Red Arrow Highway, the plans for it and where we were at. Since then, we've met with a couple of business owners down there that will be directly affected if the path goes through. Capozio's Restaurant and a antique mall. Discussing drainage issues, hydro issues and free access issues where we called to it. No controlled access points in their lots. So met with them, they are all on board, very understanding, excited for this project as anyone is when you repave Red Arrow Highway. So that's been an update for them. We have all business owners pretty much accounted for. All, anyone affected by this project down there has been talked to, discussed with, given a heads up what's going on. And basically showing what their new driveways are going to look like. Everyone's on board. The final design is done. We did have to add a couple more drainage objects to it as we saw water issues last week in areas we didn't think we had. Side design's been completed. It has been sent to MDOT for final review. It can be changed during construction at any point by myself if we deem necessary. So that's why we moved forward with what we had, just so we can get it in the queue. That way we're not held up by any issues at the state. So just recapping a little what Brian said, we've seen the paths in Chickaming and New Buffalo. Both townships have presented resolutions that we do eventually need to get in front of you guys to kind of more or less accept in an official way with our own resolution. But we're just making sure we got all logistics in place with those before we do that. They're going to maintain a path, any path in their township, not just Red Arrows. So Marquette Greenway in Buffalo, then Chickaming, any path that we do, or they may do through Sawyer, down Flynn, anywhere in the township, they're going to maintain. I met with Lake Township Tuesday night at their board meeting, discussed a little bit. They show the same enthusiasm for the path is if it comes, they will maintain it. They're fortunate enough, most of the path in our township will run through Warren Dunes. So we got the maintenance side down, which was a huge question. The biggest question now is funding. Like I've mentioned before, this is the last section of path that us as a road department is proposing be built. In the same funding category as the road for design and safety purposes coming through this quarter. We have a large, large curve in this area that is heavily traveled between Lakeshore and Cherry Beach. If you're familiar with those, there's a massive culvert there, big embankment that people have to cross. That's what you're seeing right here in the bottom of your screen, this is Cherry Beach. Then up on top is Lakeshore. So there's a small segment of path there with a massive embankment that people do use to cross to get to the road end on Cherry Beach. So that's one of the areas that whatever the decision is with the path is that is a section that we are recommending 100%. Has to be built with this project for safety. So that, that's that area right there. The rest of it is a matter of connecting Harvard area to Lakeshore, which is already a heavily motorized, non-motorized corridor for people and pedestrians to get from point A to point B. So this is the last section, we had a meeting with tap grant coordinators in regards to Marquette Greenway. Mentioned the Red Arrow path saying, hey, we've got our points constructed. We'll be coming to you in the future for heavy funding. They are more excited because they're looking at it as a connecting to a area for interstate, non-motorized from Indiana to Michigan, the Marquette Greenway, we're eventually going to be connecting to. So that's what they're stressing is like, hey, you got your points of connection, we're on board. Applications are being submitted for 23 fiscal year to get this path built. And it's one massive grant to go from basically Richmond all the way to US 12, but the spots taken out that are already unbilled. So the federal funding is coming. We did ask because there's a question if tap was going to get used this year on the Marquette Greenway due to delays from Amtrak. If it could, if it could be rerouted, and the answer was kind of no, it's too late to reroute it because we tried to get that extra tap funding for the path this year. But we're too late again to do that. So this is the last section, like I said, that we're proposing to build with the road in the same category. And then after that, we'll be looking at tap funding from there on out. Any questions? Comments?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you, Kevin, for coming and sharing this. I'm glad to hear that there's been discussion about who will then maintain the pathway. For me, and I think this would go probably to the parent committee while you guys are discussing this, best practices on non-motorized trails. If we have a policy internally for procedure wise, that we can then review and adopt so that we have something for legacy purposes. And then the other thing that I wanted to ask is. I know you said that the municipalities will then maintain this. But I know in Act 51 that there's a requirement that we contribute at least 1% of the funding that we receive. So if and when that time comes that we have a master plan completed and constructed within Barrian County, what then will we do for, for that 1%? Will we then create a formula to contribute to those municipalities? Or will there be something else we'll contribute to?
So with that question, we did ask last week how it's called the 10K rule for Act 51. We have to spend 10% of our budget over 10 years. That's a rolling 10 years, so they can take any snapshot in time of 10 years, you got to show that you spent 10% on non-motorized. We have done that since that rule's been in effect for this, we've exceeded it traditionally because of the Indiana Michigan Trail. We're talking, I think almost two and a half, three million dollars of trails built down there in the last, now it's township in the last four years. What's nice about that is even though it's not our direct funding, we are still the applicant for the grants. So the money comes to us and it gets shown as spent on non-motorized. So any tap grant, any USDA grant that comes through, we get to show it. So I don't have the spreadsheet up here, but I got a spreadsheet that we show that we spent almost little over a million dollars on non-motorized in one year. Zero of it came out of our budget. It was all township. So that, that's the benefit of that. We have a clarifying question out there to Act 51 to say clarify that this is the proper means and ways. If not, we're still okay, we're spending, we roughly have to spend about 200,000 a year on non-motorized. For example, the trail we're presenting here is about 295,000. That puts us above the clear zone. So next year, if we didn't have to spend money, we wouldn't. But moving in, it's just not non-motorized 10 foot paths that classify that. A five foot shoulder, a four foot shoulder on a road classifies non-motorized depending rule of urban. So when we widen a road, Shawnee Road, Cleveland Road, Red Bud, any of those, when we widen to four feet or more, non-motorized portion of the project. So I had to break down how much that shoulder costs separate of the road, and we get to present that to Act 51 for infrastructure compliance.
Yes ma'am.
I, I wonder if there will be an opportunity, thank you, for you to give us a ride down the highway. This Marquette Greenway, is it almost or what?
So it's in design right now, so it's looking like right now due to an Amtrak easement issue, that construction probably won't start till spring of '23.
Okay.
So anytime, if you want to take a rough ride again, I'm more than happy to take a bus to it.
And that's why I wonder, you know, if we had a night meeting or, or something, that was, I thought it was really fun. Because you ride down the road, you got to watch, you know, where you're driving, you can't really see anything.
Absolutely.
So I hope that'll be in your mind.
Thank you.
Right. I had a question, but it was more for the attorney. We have these two resolutions, one from Chickaming Township and one from New Buffalo Township. Saying that they're. Like New Buffalo Township. Considering parks and recreation and therefore become part of the New Buffalo Township Park Department for funding and maintenance. And then on the other one, it says the same thing, only Chickaming Township parks for future maintenance. My question is, do we need to draft a contract between the county of Barrian and these municipalities? Because really according to law, these are political statements, these resolutions. Next election, these people can be voted out and then the township, both townships could come up and say, we're not funding it anymore. But if we had a contract with them that they had signed, is that the way we should go with this issue?
I think a maintenance agreement of some sort would be a more formalized agreement.
Thank you, that was my only question, thank you.
Commissioner Scott, to go with that, as long with those lines, is that can be included is each one of these townships that apply for this has to be issued right away from the road department. Basically non-expiring to allow them to do this because technically it's all within our right of way. So they still have to be issued a right of way permit, which would go as a contractual document that we can add a maintenance agreement to for what they need to do.
But just another comment on that, then if this is the way it is going to be, then do we need to put in the contract with these townships? Till perpetuity? Due to the fact that, like I said, that is a, it is a political organization they're put in. And those people can be replaced and then the next regime will come in and say no.
With respect, I'd love, hope to address that question. So if we put together some type of maintenance agreement that would reference the lifetime of the asset, let's figure a 25 year lifespan of the asset. Where Commissioner Scott is going is exactly what I was hoping to get out of today's discussion, which is we have the resolutions, but following up with some type of formalized maintenance agreement seems like a shrewd move. As a group, is that something that all of you would be accepting of if we were to pursue that? Okay.
You looked like you had a question.
I don't know, I don't know, question, but more of a comment on a go-forward basis. Yes, I think that, obviously that we need to have the maintenance agreement because, because things do change. So I think that has to happen. But I'm more concerned as time goes on, Kevin, about the figure eight that you want to draw around the county. You know, a lot of that road, a lot of this path goes right down a bidirectional highway with no third turn lane, IEM 140. And I know there's a 66 foot right of way there, not a 33 foot right of way. And I know what that means to a landowner in infringement onto that right of way and what that could cause, you know, so, so. And my concern is on a go-forward basis, I get it that, that the other communities have adopted this, it's, it's great. As we get more rural with this, and I know that the communities, we care about road maintenance out there. And going forward to say that they're going to spend money, that we're going to have that same agreement with all of the townships as we go through things. If this continues, it's going to be a difficult pill to swallow. When somebody says, look, I, I've, I've got, you know, our people are being taxed additionally here to take care of the roads in our, in our area. That, you know, we've got, we've got referendum out here that says that people are being taxed additionally, Water League Township, Pipestone Township, those, those. And now, and now they're being asked to, to, would they be asked to maintain this, this walkway that's out there, this non-motorized path? And so I don't know what will happen as this figure eight makes its way around the county on a, on a going forward basis. And I, and I too, and I'll, I'll reiterate that difficult on a bidirectional state highway to think with the speeds that people are traveling out there, that, that it's safe to, to be out there with a non-motorized path of any type. Unless it's pretty elaborate and it gets you way off, way off the pavement.
Correct.
And so I, I get very, very concerned about that. We, we, living on M140 where I live, we hear all the time, people, you can watch the road and people, they've got that rumble strip in the center of the road. And they're constantly crossing that rumble strip for no reason. They're distracted and they're, you know, you'll hear the tires ratchet across that rumble strip for no reason. And, and I can't imagine that at those speeds on a bidirectional state highway that, that it's, it's going to, you know, what that's going to look like. And, and moreover, I'm, I'm concerned, I haven't talked to my townships about this, but I'm concerned that they may be saying, you know, what does this look like in our budget?
Right. So a couple of answers to that, you know, from my background experience, really with Jim here, when you put a, you put non-motorized on a 55 mile an hour highway that's designed to handle 65 mile an hour speeds, even though it's supposed to be 55. You're not asking for a very good mingling effort between cars and non-motorized. Especially when you get out into the east side of the county, when you get to agricultural, how many times you driving your tractor down the side of that road that you're pushing outside that shoulder to make sure traffic's not hitting you. So the idea of the figure eight, those the US 12 and M140 corridors does not mean that's where the path's going to go. That just gives us an idea of, hey, here's the areas that we're going to go. We could run parallel on another road, we could jog it differently on different roads. Idea, so I don't want it to get stuck in people's heads that US 12 and M140 is the route that we plan on taking. We will look at different routes to get them off that, get them off the edge of the road. May have to look at farmers and say, hey, are you willing to let us purchase 10 feet of outside the right of way to put this path to get it further away from the road? Things like that, that's all logistics as we get further into it. The maintenance side of it for townships outside of this area. The goal here is we're starting this path in a heavy urbanized area where tourism is high and where scenery is wanted. So people are wanting to move from point A to point B to go see the lake, to get to these beaches. I'm saying someone from Water Elite or Pipestone is going to get on a non-motorized path and ride all the way to Union Pier to go to the beach for the day. That's not the point we're making, but as we move out, people will start seeing the benefit of the trail, how many are using it? But as far as the maintenance side and how much it's going to cost, that's something that we've talked about internally already presenting to townships, hey, you're going to make this resolution and all this paperwork that we're going to push through. Here's our estimate, what it's going to cost to maintain that trail for the next, we can do 50 years. You know, this trail is not going to have to have a maintenance of a road. You don't chip seal a path. God, we know we don't chip seal a path because you're going to have people come unglued that are trying to walk, roller blade or anything like that. So options in ultra thin. An ultra thin per mile is, you know, for a trail like that, we could be looking at $40,000 for a mile of ultra thin on three quarters inch asphalt, just to reseal it. And that, once every 15 years, Lincoln Township's a perfect example, we're doing it once every 12 years in a subdivision which sees motorized tracks. It could be once every 20 years. So when you get into that tax dollar issue, we're presenting, hey, if you budget this over the next 50 years, $1,000 a year roughly, $2,000 a year is what you need to bank on. But it comes back into, I don't think that's the big maintenance question as far as every day, do you want to plow out in the winter time up to the township? Do you want to use as cross-country up to township? Can't be used as a snowmobile path, as much as people probably still will, it's non-motorized. So getting into things like that, sweeping it, you know, we've already said if a tree comes down on Red Arrow and touches the white line, we're going to take the tree all the way back to the base, which will clear the non-motorized path. That's our practice, but we're not going to plow it, we're not going to broom it. You know, we're not going to do anything outside of our normal maintenance activities and moving along the side of the edge or anything like that. So it is a logistics issue as we get into those townships of presenting to them, hey, this is how much we think this path is going to cost for the, just say next 50 years and presenting that. And I think that may soften a blow, but I still see the concern of, hey, we're paying for a non-motorized path when we got five miles of roads that are, you know, dirt, not even paved.
So, so I get that. Let me, let me ask you this, as far as the, the taxpayers, the homeowners are concerned. Have you ever had to use it yet in, in the non-motorized pass that you've already constructed or are in process right now? And will you ever use eminent domain to take that 10 feet from a landowner? Because it's the most logical place. Will, will eminent domain, has it been used and will it ever be used?
This board will be the only person to make me use eminent domain. I won't go in and take someone's property. We got plenty of right of way, we can make it work. If we can't make it work, we'll find another route, you know. I own land as well. I mean, that eminent domain is something we don't even talk about. I've had townships talk about, I said, stay away from it. It's political suicide. Don't even worry about it, we'll figure out another road.
Great, thank you. So Kevin, while you were talking about road right of ways, it brought up a couple of questions. Early on, when we had had the discussion about the Red Arrow linear path, I had asked about who does the policing and, and, you know. Kind of monitoring the use of that. I believe that we will have to then. I believe that we will have to then, as a board, look at our policies because there is a right-of-way ordinance. There is an internal policy for the road department. And if I remember correctly, right-of-way activity is jurisdictionally to the waymaster in, in monitoring and then citating if there's any violation.
So he has, he has authority to monitor right-of-way, uh, just like any officer does. Uh, just because it states that we have poss- that he can authorize it him to do so. Sheriff, his deputies, township deputies, anybody has authorization within, you know, any type of law ordinance or anything. If it's outside the right-of-way, they can enforce. Because there, I've heard multiple conversations, I think just yesterday, of them calling the waymaster, how do I write this ticket? They, they blew past a barricade. And, you know, it's a conversation here, it says code, boom, done. So county, township, city, village, all legal enforcement, law enforcement have the same jurisdiction, um, that we do. We actually come up to jurisdiction, they don't come to ours, you know, they have ultimate say. But we just have the ability to monitor the right-of-way with our staff being the deputy sheriff.
Can I jump in there for a second? I'd suggest that as we develop the, the maintenance agreement that's been discussed, that enforcement of use rules be inserted into that, that document. If the applicant, uh, the, the local unit has local law enforcement, it would make sense to have that built into the maintenance agreement that if they don't want to see snowmobiles on it and they have a local law enforcement option, that they would then be tasked with ensuring that the, the use of that pathway aligns with the proposed use. Kevin made a comment about snowmobiles. It's a certainty that if these get built, you will have kids riding snowmobiles on them. But if that is something that is a passionate issue for a local government, it would make sense to build that into the maintenance agreement that we are not going to ask the sheriff to patrol these, to potentially keep one kid on a snowmobile from, from using the pathway. That should fall on the local unit. Just as I'm making the notes, we've talked about a maintenance agreement. Some memorialize these understandings outside of adopted resolutions. The other note I've made is prior to any type of trail building effort, townships would be asked to adopt a resolution formally requesting the project with the understanding that a maintenance agreement will follow upon completion of the project. A prohibition on im- eminent domain that can be built into our policy that if we need private property, it would have to be a negotiated sale for the use of, of that property. And then location and safety of the trail has been a discussion that I've heard now from a couple of commissioners, was a valid point. And I think that's something that we can build into our policy that as we are scouting routes, that active consideration to the adjacent traffic pattern has to be at the top of the discussion.
I'm, I, good notes. And, and all things that we're concerned about, the other thing is between motorized vehicles and the rec- the non-motorized path. Now, how do we allow, as we get further to, and you know, the question's coming, Kevin. How do we allow, because we're going to move agricultural equipment up and down there readily? Okay, and it's going to happen. And we're going to, depending on where that path is and how it's designed, the only way that you can do it is to keep it fifteen, twenty feet off of the, off of the, the white line in order to make it so that it is truly a non-motorized path, if it is alongside of. So how do we design that so that, that, you know, people have a right to farm? And we can lean on that. But now you're constructing roads so that you've got a, who's got the right-of-way? Ag equipment has to have the right-of-way.
Right.
On, in, in every case, it has to have the right-of-way.
Absolutely, so.
And now you've got somebody with a wheelchair on there. You've got somebody that's, that's got roller blades on there. And we've got agr- and that's, that's really the way it is on ones that we're currently constructing that are right alongside. That equipment would be, would, would have, would have the right-of-way. And it gets to be complicated.
So we, I mean, we share the same vision there as far as when you're moving a quad track with a cul-de-sac and a disc that's sitting at about twenty-four feet coming down that road, straddling that white line, you're twelve feet out in the lane, cars have to go your twelve feet outside the road. So that ten-foot clearance between the edge of travelway and that path is going to be hindered by a disc or planner coming down that roadway. That's, you know, wide, I know a planner will fold up a little bit harder, but, you know, your disc and cul-de-sacers don't. So when we get into that, that's on the design. I, I mean, we will make sure that that path is out far enough that it's not going to be, I don't want agricultural going down that path. We're going, I'm not going to put it right next to the road and say, hey, tractors, straight out the center line now because you can't come over this. I mean, that's, that's ridiculous to even think about. So when we get into design, uh, I mean, it'll be myself working with a consultant, making sure. And it might be a phone call, hey, we're going to come out and measure one of your pieces of equipment. So we know that we're close, uh, to what we need to do, we need to push out another ten feet. And if that gets into that right-of-way question, are we outside of there? Well, here come the easement questions. Can we get a permit easement? Can we purchase right-of-way at market value from homeowners if needed? If not, let's find a different route. Let's move it off that main road. If we can pinpoint, you know, you can't pinpoint main corridors for agriculture because agriculture is everywhere. And we can't pinpoint where it's going to be minimized. M one forty, main thoroughfare. You know, if you jump off to, let's just say Angling Road, for example, over there, one or two maybe to get to those fields. Things like that is when we get in design, we'll start pinpointing. And, and, you know, it'll probably be traffic counts or some type of observation, uh, through the summer, where that movement's at to make sure that we understand where we're putting that path and we're allowing enough room.
So Kevin, what happens now when, it may not be agricultural equipment, but say it's municipal equipment. You're running a backhoe and you've got to go down Napier Avenue and it's three-lane. All right, so we're now, we've got the, they're right alongside, you know, the, the, the wheelchairs and the people are right alongside that. What do the municipal, the, the drivers do? The people that are operating that equipment, what do they do now? They must dodge out into the?
Traffic lane.
They, they, they go around, they go around it at this point in time. And that's, and that's what you're talking about. You're going to have to avoid that in future plans because you can't, can't take that combine out into oncoming traffic. I can't take it out there and, you know, that, that's twenty-two foot wide and I can't take it out there.
So Napier's an example of on-road facilities, uh, and the same concept. You know, you have on-road, so you have a backhoe running down that white line on that paved shoulder, sees a wheelchair up ahead and moves out to active traffic lane for a thousand feet. That person behind him gets impatient, passes into turn lane. When you just develop, an accident hazard. So, I mean, things like that is what we look at is, let's get it off the road. You know, Napier, perfect example of putting sidewalks down the side of now. So that's going to get it freed up to allow that municipal to run down. But outside of Napier, any road, if it's an on-road facility, that's a different case, you know? It, it, it's, we had to, that's just a wide shoulder, we classify it. It can be used as non-motorized, but it's there for the agricultural community to not to tear up that road, even though it had the least impact on edge of road compared to a garbage truck. So when we get into it, separating non-motorized path, providing that example, and you become into a great issue too, is you're not going to take that piece of equipment off the hinge point of a shoulder, dip it down on a curb, because, I mean, it's too big to do that, so you're going to stay on the road. So we're going to push that path out as far as we possibly can to allow you the most, most room that you possibly can.
I know Napier's even, in, in, particularly for, for recording the floor here, but the, the fact is, is that Napier's a good example because the road signs and the mailboxes along Napier are one of the, one of the factors that keep us out in, over the center line. Because the equipment won't fold small enough to get, I mean, from the shoulder, from where the edge of the mailbox and the road signs, to the center line, isn't enough room to get it down there. So we're already complying and, and occupying everything, all the way up to the edge of the mailbox and the road sign.
And you know, with the road signs and stuff, you know, we have to maintain a, a five to seven-foot clearance off the edge of roadway. So, you know, that's kind of our governing factor. Anything outside of that is safe by that until you get past that sign, then you come back out. But yes, we do have to maintain that distance with signs, not as a hindrance, but just for visual aspect for vehicle traffic down the roadway.
Anyone else have any questions?
Last comment I just want to say is, you know, I want to clarify, I know the questions that come up that we're focusing in southwest of this county. But I encourage townships, if your township is vicious, come to you and say, well, we want a non-motorized path. Get us a non-motorized plan. Uh, you know, when we have a plan for a township in front of us, we know what roads we're going to do. We know where to look now, where they want to put a path, where we need to start thinking, hey, yeah, we're going to put a road here, we're going to repave it. Do we need to put wide shoulders on it? Do we need to think about right-of-way issues? Can the road shift? How can we fit that path in? So it's just a planning thing. So if they come to you saying, hey, we want non-motorized, great, do us a plan. Because we do have to spend that money that is only available for non-motorized folks. So we do, we do look at things like that. So I encourage them to submit the road department something, so we have it on file.
Okay, two things. Um, first as to a maintenance agreement, this was astutely brought up. If that maintenance agreement is tied to the, the maintenance of the trail, the existence of the trail, then Thaddeus, a question for you. Would we be better to grant a license instead of an easement? Because as you know, a license, a license is a privilege and easement is a non-posessory right in perpetuity. I'm a little concerned about granting an easement that never goes away unless they agree to release it. And if the trail goes away, they'd still have an easement across that stretch. So I'm wondering if we should do a license?
Yeah.
The other thing is if it's a non-motorized trail, we have the sheriff and the undersheriff here. My recollection is that if it's non-motorized and you want to enforce it, it has to be posted as non-motorized. If it's not posted, then we have a, an issue, the kid on the snowmobile can say, I didn't know. And I think that's a specific intent crime. So if the sign's there, assuming the kid can read, it's not always safe, let's assume that the kid can. Then it's a lot easier to say, hey. And I think it would be good to have it posted because whether it's the wheelchair or the roller blades or someone out for a walk or bicycle ride. Granted, you're not expecting snowmobiles all year round, but somebody on a dirt bike would say, perfect. I can get between these barriers with my bike and off I go. So I would just put it out there for consideration that we have it posted, that we, the license.
Um, on the license aspect, because I'm not an attorney and I don't know, ask the question. What protections do the county have on a liability issue? If someone is getting hurt on that because it is our property, uh, the right-of-way, uh, is, are we protected by either a license or an easement? And that I don't know.
We've got sovereign immunity, I'll defer to Thaddeus. I mean, if, if there's gross negligence, somebody can always come after us. But if we've posted it, if it's properly maintained, and I'd be more concerned about that if it had a crater that we just left in there and someone fell in and we just saw their hands sticking up, you know, hell. Otherwise, I think we've got a pretty good shield if we take reasonable precautions.
Yeah, and I think we could look at including an indemnification provision in the maintenance agreement that if, if either party is grossly negligent, that they would then defend, uh, any liability that resulted from that.
Sir.
Uh, yeah, I, when we're looking at non-motorized vehicles, uh, don't forget, there's a lot of motorized wheelchairs that are kicking out, there's a lot of them in Niles, and they're going up and down the walkway in Niles over scooters.
In the past five years, you've seen with, with lithium batteries, the e-bikes are becoming more popular. One-wheel scooters are becoming very popular. Um, wheelchairs, mobility vehicles are all going to be considerations that have to be factored into this. I'm going to work with Kevin and Thaddeus to try and assemble a draft maintenance agreement that I'll float to the admin committee to review. This is exactly the conversation that I was hoping to have for it. It's just setting some goalposts on what the board would like to see tied back to these long-term agreements. Um, I'll send out my notes from today's conversation to the board. If you have ideas, there's no wrong discussion here. If you have ideas on something that you think could impact your local unit, send them to me. And the discussion about electric-powered vehicles is a good, a good discussion to, to be thinking about on the use of the trail. Story on, I worked on a trail project that was intended to connect a middle school, um, to a city. Trail project, huge success, kind of ton of traffic for pedestrians. You talk about a utility conflict, one thing that we did not give consideration to when constructing it, when designing it, was the trail was also adjacent to a retirement home. And the vehicle traffic going in and out of the retirement home on a day-to-day basis, I would argue that there's a lot of seniors coming in and out of that retirement home. And a phenomenon that we saw fairly quickly was some of the seniors, when leaving, would get confused and instead of driving onto the road, they would drive onto the path. Despite it being an incredibly narrow surface, they would drive on the path. So the utility conflict is, is a concern and it's something that I personally lived through. Now, we ended up solving the issue with Bob and with some future curb cuts to that retirement home. And so the path absolutely made sense, but your points are, it's not a loss.
Okay. Thanks. Anyone else? Did you have any closing comments? All right. Um, thank you very much. And, um, we've got some homework to do.
Yep.
Public comments before we break for committees. Hearing none, we'll be back here. Yes, oh, I'm sorry, Jerry, come on up.
Oh, I just wanted to make a comment about what you're discussing. Oh. Okay, thank you. About what you were discussing here, and, and I was thinking that, you know, I've, I've been out in the evenings and, in the cities and, and I, there are wheelchairs running around in the city and it, and it's dark. And they, and they don't have reflectors or anything on them. And I was thinking that, you know, some way there ought to be a way to have everybody with a wheelchair or something that moves slower, to have a, a slow-moving vehicle reflector on the back of it. It's all.
And be a good thing for the legislature to take up.
Yeah.
We don't have the authority, but good idea. Any other com-